An approval of the appropriate resolution of support. Been meeting and in constant contact with the area mayors. And what we did is Kevin Ruane, who's the mayor of Sanibel, is the gubernatorial appointee, I forget the exact title, but for southwest Florida and all things water, if you will. He had encouraged us, the Sanibel City Council drafted a resolution along these lines. He did, and Audrey, this was another thing Audrey and I discussed yesterday, the best way to go about this, and I just wanted to read into the record a message that Mayor Ruane just sent me. And we can take this, I think according to Audrey, a few different directions, one that's pretty harsh, one that's not quite so harsh. But what I want to make sure that we do, regardless of which direction we go in, is that the city of Benita Springs, if there has been, and I'll just read this, he said "There is quote unquote, blue-green algae in your canals in Benita Springs." We had a discussion yesterday with you and your city attorney that Benita Springs was not impacted by releases from Lake Okeechobee. The individual that assisted me indicated that she lives on Barefoot Beach Canal, and there is indeed blue-green algae in the canal. Limiting the state of emergency will only impact your city in terms of funding. So Audrey, do you want to, I've kind of teed this up a little bit, roughly, what we're looking at here, if we go forward and what direction we go?
So you have right now two resolutions in front of you. Resolution one is the Red Tide, which is the harmful algel blooms and drift macroalgae. Now, because I was not sure, and I do not live on a canal, and I don't know the freshwater status, you know, as far as I know, the Imperial River was not impaired, there is normal blue-green algae, you're going to always have a little, but the question is, do you have some that is affected by Lake Oh? And apparently, there is evidence that we do have Lake Oh discharge issues in our waterways. What I would recommend is you adopt the first resolution, which is the one for Red Tide, and then we do have a secondary resolution, I can provide you, not this one, one provided by the city clerk, that goes into the blue-green algae, and we can adopt that at this time if you so wish. Recognizing it, it reads pretty close to the same, it's a different, and I can provide you a copy of that one very quick, or the clerk can provide you a copy of that right now. Maybe not, maybe I can provide a copy. We can make copies of it so that you're able to see what was prepared, and that follows the state of emergency. Now, a state of emergency, it is martial law, everybody laughs when I say that, but that is what we call it in the charter, as well as other laws. And things you would do is perhaps you would have to gain entry through somebody's dock, you might, you know, have to use people's property as staging area if you need to do cleaning efforts. And it does provide, you know, where, if there's, right now, we know there's state funding, and if there becomes federal funding, it's useful for proving your uses. Of course, if you do go for federal funding, any procurement still has to meet the super-circular requirements, which are the federal requirements. The state allows us to waive things for emergency, the feds are not so nice.
Right, right, no, absolutely. And then there's the alternative, for lack of a better term, would be more passive, it would be okay, what you're doing in Sanibel and Lee County is great, we're here to offer moral support, but we're not demanding any financial redress.
Absolutely, that's just a, and in 2006, when there was Lake Okeechobee, discharges were substantial, Cape Coral adopted a resolution to implore DEP and South Florida Water Management District and the US Army Corps of Engineers to go and fix, so that, that's that type of resolution. That's not a state of emergency, it's another government saying, hey, you guys have to do something, type resolution. So you don't need to adopt that if you're adopting the emergency. If the emergency does exist here, I would adopt that emergency for the Lake Okeechobee in addition to the one for Red Tide.
Sure.
So you have two different emergencies, two different executive orders by the governor. Lee County has them separated into two different subject matters, I would suggest keeping them as two separate subject matters.
Okay, great, thanks Audrey. Counsel?
I say, so moved.
Okay.
Go with the harshest ones we can, I mean, it's going to affect everywhere, I've already talked to local realtors, people who usually will start booking out season right now for rentals, not happening, they're not coming down, so.
I'll second that motion. Counsel, is there further discussion or questions?
Only to say, Pete, thanks for all your efforts on this.
No, 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 absolutely, and Audrey and I had a few interesting words yesterday, which is great. No, none, well, you know what I'm saying, like we do up here in council, but we didn't, like you said, you wanted, you needed to, if you're, if we're going to do this, we need proof that it's happening, we need, you know, we need to be certain of what we're doing. And I think one of the discussion points that while I haven't been out in the water in a few days, let's face it, we all know, our neighborhood beach is closed, some of the beaches are closed, there are dead fish, I mean, we need to separate out the issues, but the bottom line is, I feel strongly that we don't do this as a passive, that we, that we, you know, stay in sync with our fellow mayors, our, the mayors, in fact, I know the mayor of Naples has done the same thing, so obviously, there's evidence of contamination down there, and it's one of these things, whether we have the hard science or the hard evidence, and have something in a glass jar for everybody to see, the reality is, it has to get from Lake Okeechobee to Collier County somehow, and I'm not quite sure how they would get around Benita Springs, right? So with that in mind, is there further discussion?
I do have a question, because you didn't mention this, do we have to show that we have the blue-green algae?
You don't have to show it, but if you feel that evidence that you have in this area, that's fine for me, I mean, I just don't see, you know, again, I'm not a biologist, my undergrad's environmental science, I learned ecosystems, I'm not sure how necessarily this is occurring, but if it is occurring, and it's not just, you know, normal, everybody's going to have a little blue-green algae, if we're actually having Lake Okeechobee discharge problems because of stormwater sheet flow to this area, which it could be, because the blue-green is a freshwater issue, the Red Tide, of course, is a saltwater issue. Sanibel unfortunately gets the mix of the pleasure of both.
Audrey, how about the, just, I think Greg was getting at this, the economic effects of it, it's clearly affecting us economically, as in, people go on the computer in Germany, and they don't know from, from wires from Benita, and it's clearly, the blue-green algae clearly affecting the economy of our area.
And that's an interesting question, because I remember from the Deepwater Horizon, we could not submit, we could not submit, because we did not have physical touching. Now, this is state of emergency for the state, not federal, and that's also admiralty law, so there's a bunch of differences there. At the end of the day, we may put, no different than hurricanes, you put money out for a state of emergency, you might not get compensated back. Hopefully you do, but it's no guarantee.
Right.
And remember, you did adopt a private property debris during the hurricanes, it's no different, you're, Red Tide, you're going to have private property debris removal, that you're going to have to go, maybe not on streets, but in canals and waterways.
Also, also on the beaches now, since July 1st, when they...
That's Red Tide, right.
Well, I'm just saying that, saying that also.
Absolutely.
No, I think it's clear for Red Tide, but, you know, and it's, and I totally am board with doing something about the green algae, whether it's, whatever freshwater body it is, and if that's what's necessary to get some action, that's fine with me. And I, and I think we'd need a state of emergency, because it does occur on private property.
Right, so this would be two state of emergencies, so you have the saltwater one, which is the Red Tide one, and then you would also have the state of emergency for the Lake Okeechobee discharges impacting our waterways. So we'll have both of those.
Pete, is Naples, do you know, doing the state of emergency?
Are they doing both of them?
On the blue-green?
I, in our discussion, right, right.
That was what Mayor Ruane made it, he said that in Naples Bay, they're having blue-green algae from Lake Okeechobee now. But that being said, remember, there are farmlands west, sorry, east of Naples Bay.
Let me ask, I don't want to slow this down, but I was watching on the computer, when you were up there, and one of the county commissioners was saying, well, where are your ordinance, you know, so it makes sense to do this, are the other guys doing the blue-green, or, they are?
They are, yeah, no, and they don't think, I would say too, not to bog this down, you have, you have the state of Florida, that's extended, Governor Scott, the state of emergency, you have Lee County, that's extended the state of emergency, and basically has to do that every seven days, so even in between their meetings, this, so this is us joining with Lee County and the state for the state of emergency.
Yes, and let me...
Right, right, correct.
Right, let me point out two more things, and one is, as Mayor pointed out, state of emergencies by statute only last seven days. Now, we have an ordinance that allows the mayor, if we're unable to have a meeting, or the deputy mayor, and if failing the mayor or deputy mayor, any council member can sign a resolution to extend, so we, similar to what we did with Hurricane Irma, we could end up doing that for a couple times. The second thing, state of emergency, I just forgot what I was going to say, oh, Lee County's state of emergency applies to incorporated as well as unincorporated areas. So it is a little overlapping, that there's two state of emergencies, but there needs to be coordination with Lee County specifically as to Red Tide, because that is overlapping it both.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second, counsel, is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Aye.
Councilman Dewitt?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Great, thanks, everybody. Item B, discussion of the Wonder Gardens Cafe and next steps. I'll just throw out a blurb, unfortunately, and Arlene, you can follow up here, the deal that we did have in place with the microbrewery didn't work out, so where does that leave us, Arlene?
So there's a, there are a couple of options, and I think I'll have Audrey kind of also lead into what we can be doing as well, but we can reopen the letter of interest, and have an advertising process, have an open house, and have folks be able to look at, look at the facility and schedule, similar to the process we just had. I do know the mayor has received inquiries, once the information was out that the potential of the brewery not going forward, there's a lot of interest. So I also asked the city attorney to kind of elaborate a little bit more about whether we could do some outreach to some targeted folks who we wanted to bring to the downtown that met the same type of pattern of what we're looking for, and so I'll let her explain a little bit about that, but in the end, if we have quite so many folks interested, the process may be more concise if we do open up the letter of interest, and making sure we've done that outreach to all those people to participate in it as well.
Right, 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 and I would just, would, you know, and it's one of these things, master the obvious here, but avoid, or do a little more due diligence, and a little second, third, fourth round check on making sure that the next recipient that we choose is able to follow through, right?
So you have three options, one is, you did have an RFP out there, since the first person, the first person is now out, you could see if any of the other two people in the RFP are interested, and go for it there, and, you know, start negotiating, flush it out, if you think the proposals there were sufficient, and something you would be interested in.
The others had backed out previously, though, so.
Well, one came in today, so.
Who came in, was that one of...
Can you guys update us maybe a little bit? I've been trying to keep track, but it's like, I can't keep it in real time, so to speak.
So we did have one come in today, and he, and that was a previous applicant.
Correct, and they were, they were not one that backed out, that just wasn't one that was selected by the selection committee, just due to their proposal, it wasn't necessarily something for the direction of downtown.
It's more of a coffee shop than a brewery?
No, it was actually more office space, and they were only going to have a coffee cart three days a week in their proposal, so it was more full-time office use, some live music on some days, probably weekends, and then, and they only put that they wanted a one-year lease. So that was one that the selection committee kind of threw out.
Well, and then the secondary thing is, you could always do a one-year lease, and then go and, you know, go with an RFP, because it takes a while to have the RFP, it's about three months to get, you know, to set out the RFP shop, and then it takes a while to negotiate, plus you do need to do it by ordinance, so that's, it's a logistics and a time thing for council to consider.
I think we should open it up, and also try to target some uses that either the staff or maybe DPC could come up with, or even ask Everglades Wonder Garden, you know, whether they have a direction that they think might be useful to them. I know they're going to put, they're trying to put in a coffee house of some sort, or a tea house adjacent to them, so we do, you want to make it somewhat compatible with that. And, and it was interesting when I, you, I read the letter from the person who felt that they couldn't fulfill their, their expectations there, that his assessment of the building itself, he said, would lend itself to more like a cafe or a small restaurant, so I don't know, I mean, I've been in the building, but I don't know enough about whether it is already purposed in a certain direction, so.
It really isn't, it is, it is a small building, and that's, that could be why that was his suggestion. There are some ADA and code issues that need to be brought up to date, so there are some major renovations that need to be done. We think that might have been, well, we know, that's the sticking point of why the brewery backed out, because of the extensive renovations that need to be done before they can open.
Would any entity have to do the same thing?
Yes, and they would have to take a look at their particular use and those ADA requirements, depending on that particular use, so we'd have to, and what we were looking at before is the proposal was, was a rebate on their lease, dollar amount, so that they could go ahead and do those repairs, so that certain dollar amount. We've, we've got some estimates from the community development department where we think those repairs should be, but it also is dictated by that particular use. So what we could do is maybe have a little moment to get the word out a little bit more that we'll be opening the letter of interest, so more people are aware, I think this was a good start, that the, the word had gotten out, but I think maybe some press releases and information out first, and then open up the letter of interest, and then let everyone apply, and then we can also host some open houses at the facility, so people can have an opportunity to walk through, and I would probably ask someone from the building department to be there to kind of answer any questions onsite at that time, I think that might help folks with their decision-making process.
And that's a three-month process?
Typically. Well, and we could, if we spent some upfront time doing some advertising, and then we could open it up for 30 days, for people to respond to the bid.
I think I'd be, you know, look, it's, we want to get, we want to make the right choice, but I don't see extending it for 90 days, I really don't think that's...
No, I think we could do a 30-day process for response, and then we'd have, depending on council's pleasure, previously, it was staff to review those proposals for consistency with the letter of interest, and then provide the recommendations to council, so depending on how we work those dates, you know, 45 days, we need time in between the meetings, so about 45 days or so.
Fred?
Well, you also have an option, you do it for 30 days, but if a number of the people come in and say, Arlene, we need an extra week or 10 days, don't you, you can extend the date, can't you?
Not once we set the letter of interest. If we set a letter of interest with a closing date that sealed, letters of interest have to be in by a certain time to our city clerk, proposals received after that would not be considered valid proposals.
So you can't extend the bidding date?
No.
But I think if we take a little bit of time right now to put some publicity out,
that there's an interest, and that we, right now, and then start the process, the 30-day process, and then have the selection committee work, and then bring back recommendations.
Can you write that five people are very interested in that?
Yeah.
Right, so I mean, really, we're looking at, what, two weeks to advertise, 30, and a 30, so we're looking at a 45-day process as opposed to a 90-day process?
It would probably be closer to 60 with selection committee review, and that's depending on how many proposals we get.
Right.
So, yes, we'll need to review the proposals, and then schedule it for a council meeting, and then, of course, we'll provide all the proposals to council as well.
Right.
It sounds like the shape of the building is the issue, huh?
ADA also.
That's what I mean.
Right.
All in, yeah. If it stays as a restaurant, does it have to be brought up to code, if it stays as a current restaurant?
Well, it's, it's a city facility being leased, and it is not currently to ADA code.
Why don't we sell it?
Yeah, right. Counsel, does that sound good?
That's good.
Okay, I'll make that, yes, Audrey, sorry.
If I may, just a couple more things on this, so make sure staff understands the direction of council, is the objective of this building to have it filled with something that will aid redevelopment efforts, is it to get the most money for the type of area, best, best entertainment, incubator for new businesses, or something local, what do you want to do with the building?
Well, my personal view is, I mean, I didn't, I just observed, but the concept that these guys had was a great concept, to activate the area.
Exactly.
I think that's consistent, right?
Well, I would say entertain everything, because then we may not know what we want, if you let everybody bring something in, we may see something we like that we never thought of, so, but I would take all, and then we can decide there.
And that's what we did previously.
And it may even be like a temporary interim thing that we decide on now, because, you know, it may not warrant a restaurant going in there, or, you know, something else that, not enough, you know.
So something allowing short-term uses as well as long-term uses. So if something's a short-term, and just wants to use the building closer to as-is, and have some efforts towards redevelopment, that would be something amenable to.
Yeah, I mean, we have 80 units going in in the next few years, so that's going to have more people in the area, so it might make sense that, you know.
And that might create a better demand at that point in synergy.
We can bring forward a draft LOI by the next meeting for your approval, if that, if meets council's approval, then we'll, we'll put it out for advertisement.
Okay.
And just, just one more point, if you just follow the thinking that has been advanced by DPC and form-based zoning, I do think how that building looks from the outside is really important, so if we can get someone to deliver a building that is compatible with Everglades Wonder Garden and the other things that are going on there, because I think personally, it's an eyesore, so who, who are we going to attract when it looks like that, you know?
Correct, we do have some issues, though, because...
Dilapidated, that's what it looked...
It is a historical building, so there are some, some issues of what you can and can't do based on historic preservation, so those are some things that we have to look at as well.
Right, so it's, it's going to be a tough sell.
I'm just wondering, is it the structure that's historic, or is it the area and resource?
The building itself is historic.
Right, right. Okay. It's on one of our lists?
Yes.
The entire property of the Wonder Gardens is on the list, so it goes through the review.
But I, but, you know, we've, they've improved the front of the Everglades Wonder Garden with paint and a few other things, they haven't changed it, that looks good, but that little annex there is not good.
Painting is approved, that is, that is something that can be done.
Maybe we should do that.
Structural changes are a little different.
The Historic Preservation Board reviewed the building already under the prior owner, or prior tenant, well, prior owner and prior tenant, and they did do a resolution of necessity to allow it to be painted, so you might want to have the city slap on some paint before you put it out to RFP, if you think that might help attract additional.
I like that idea, I'm not opposed to that.
Or we could, or we could agree to, once you get a new use that is there for a certain period of time, that we, that the city would take care of cosmetic improvements to the exterior.
I think what Arlene was saying before, for anything that they take it off the rent, like when you're talking about the ADA side.
Correct, I think that might be an opportunity to talk with, with whoever takes on the agreement, whether they would like to do that in lieu of rent, or whether this, or have the city participate in doing that for them, but at least then they could be part of the conversation with the color selection.
Okay, I'll make that motion, what?
I think we have direction.
Okay, you have direction, you're good?
We'll bring back, we'll bring back the draft letter of interest the next time.
Dynamite, thank you very much, thanks.
We'll begin letting the public know that, that will be coming forth.
Absolutely, great, thank you so much. Item C, discussion of the potential rescheduling of our September 19th meeting of city council due to a religious Jewish holiday, that is Rosh Hashanah on Wednesday, September 19th. Yom Kippur, my apologies, but it, but it's, but there, there is a conflict there with, with members of staff, so counsel, what's your pleasure? My thought was to have a discussion, but possibly look at the 18th?
Don't we have a city budget on the 18th anyway? What day's our budget meeting?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth, why don't we just do it 17th?
Yeah, counsel, what about the 17th?
That's good.
And do it, do an evening meeting on the 17th? Do it, you do the budget at 5:05, and then do our...
Roll right into it.
Yeah, okay, counsel, is that good?
Yep.
Dynamite, wonderful, okay. Item D, do you need anything else on that?
I asked you that evening to say hello to Lily and Austin for me, because they're watching.
Oh, is that their birthday? Oh, okay, all right, happy birthday in advance.
Okay.
Okay, item D, discussion of the PACE program and provide direction to staff, this is Councilman Mike Gibson, green sheet 18080278, Mike.
Yeah, we had a presentation from PACE, what, a month or two ago, and we didn't really make any decision at that time, so I was just bringing it forward to see what the consensus on council was, if we wanted to go forward with this. Collier County is doing it, I believe they, they're taking it up today to do, in the city of Naples also. Cape Coral's got it going on Charlotte County, so it's, I think it's a tool for people that may need a different funding source for putting on a new roof, air conditioner, you know, various things. It's not for everybody, but, you know, some people may, may need that, so I think it's something that we should consider.
No, I appreciate that, Mike, and look, it's, here again, it's not for us, I mean, the people that know me, I want to stay in people's lives as little as possible, but this, you know, this would be a program that would allow people different options, that are trying to get out from underneath the hurricane, or, you know, or up against it, and a different way to finance, and I guess go about repairs, so with that, my mind is certainly wide open on it.
Yeah, I'm going to vote against it, because of the objections that I've given twice already, because this is a private financing operation, and it's using the ability to put a line item in your tax bill that gets paid and collected through the, the tax collectors of, of Lee County, and then distributed to the financial, to the person who's in debt. And if you do look into it carefully, I think there's a lot of risk to people that might participate in there, in this, because it's easier to make a decision when you don't have to make the cash payment, you can finance it, so, I mean, I could go on and on, and I don't think that, that the rate that's given to people is particularly good, they showed that exactly in their, they were very good in telling all the risks to this program, and their diagram, and their work that's, in their material that they presented, and if you really look at it, I think that it's, I'm not sure what you gain by doing this, because people who want to do it, especially if they're not able to go through regular financing channels, are the kinds of people that you don't want them to take, you don't want to encourage them to take on debt. And the programs I've seen like this in the past, that had a financially aspect, it came through states, like I'm familiar with it in Colorado, because my children live out there, the state provided for subsidies to this, and, or zero financing that only went when you sold the house, but it was, it was definitely an incentive that came from the county in Colorado to help people winterize their homes and things like that, but it, it's not at all, this has taken one aspect of what they did out in a different state that I think worked pretty effectively, and took the financing part out of it, and, and I'm going to vote against it, because I think it's dangerous to the people who might participate in it, and I don't think that's an appropriate use of a procedure, which is collecting financed payments from a private entity and delivering it to the finance company, which is basically what you're doing, but you can vote for it if you want.
Great, thanks, Amy. Counsel, any other opinions, or thoughts, ideas? Mike, join us, make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we go forward with doing the ordinances to do this.
Okay, and I'll second that.
Like I said, it's, it's not for everybody, but some people are up against the wall, and that may be the only way that they can get a new roof on their house, or air conditioner, so.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second, is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Dewitt?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Flynn?
Nope.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Aye? Is that an aye?
No.
Okay, okay, thank you, Mike. Item E, approve an offer of employment agreement between the city of Benita Springs and interim city manager for the position of city manager. This is my green sheet, 18080283, and I'll just read it for folks that may not have this in front of them, but the background is, on June 1st, 2018, Arlene Hunter was promoted to the position of interim city manager. At this time, I would like to recommend that she be promoted to city manager and given a contract that is agreeable to both Mrs. Hunter and the city of Benita Springs. Arlene and I have had discussions regarding the position, and she has asked council to consider a three-year contract in the amount of $152,000 annually. She also... She also wishes to continue to participate in the city's benefits plans as offered to all full-time city employees. In compliance with the Florida Retirement System, FRS, the position of city manager is designated in the senior management classification for purposes of employer contribution amounts. Additionally, she does not wish to have a car allowance, but wishes to submit her mileage as all employees. She is also asking that the city council, she is also asking that the city council permit her to reside just outside of the city limits as prescribed by the charter. Should these terms be agreeable to the city council? I wish this to be provided in a contract form at our next meeting for final approval. So, um, you know, we, we've certainly been through a process here. I certainly believe, um, without any hesitation of any doubt, that Arlene has stepped up the plate. She's stepped up the plate for years, and in the past couple of months, uh, even, even more so, if that's, and that's no diminish of, of years past. But, um, she, she's ready, she's here, we know her, she knows the issues. And, uh, I'll leave, I'll leave it at that, and counsel, what are your thoughts? Amy?
I, I totally agree, and I just wanna compliment, uh, the work that, uh, Arlene has done previous to the, to the time when she was, uh, appointed interim city manager. But since then, um, the interactions that I have with her reinforces, uh, all my feelings that I had before that. Anytime I respond, I ask her a question, or I get, where, where we've been working on a couple of issues. She knows the answers, and she knows how to approach getting things done in a way that I think is remarkable. She's very hands-on, she's very responsive. Um, there's, I don't see how we could do better anywhere, with any other candidate. So I am full-heartedly, uh, agree with moving to this next position. And I, I know she's gonna be successful, and we're fortunate, and I hope she thinks she's fortunate too.
Right, thank you.
I just wanna, yeah, totally agree, and I think we are the fortunate ones here. No question about it, in my mind, I mean, uh, and I think all the proper, good things have been said. I just wanna, postscript, to me, this house thing is a no-brainer. Uh, she's basically in view of the city, uh, lived there, uh, for years. And, uh, so that, it's not like someone is living, you know, in LaBelle or something like that.
Sarasota.
Sarasota, whatever, right. Wherever, so, um, I think this is fabulous.
Right.
And I could walk to her house, so it's okay.
Okay.
Fred?
I, I, well, I agree with everything you said. I didn't hear one element of the contract, which I think we're not gonna need it, but you, but it ought to be in there. And that would be if for some reason, the contract was stopped midway or something. There's, should be something in there on that, we call it the golden parachute, or the.
Severance package.
Severance package.
Well, I think that comes with the entire contract.
Yeah, there's a lot, there's a lot of stuff in the contract.
Right, I mean, no one looking at the city managers, is it going to reflect that? Because also in there, I know, in, the past city managers had deferred comp in there, it had other things in their cell phone, the whole nine yards. So I'm assuming that's gonna be in there, and my only other question is also in that is, is raises. I mean, I know all the other city employees are based on merit. Merit raises, is the city manager's on the same thing, or is it an automatic, or, or is it just by contract?
It's by contract, and, and, because again, this, you don't want the city manager ever giving the city managers a raise. The city manager and city attorney should always get the raise directly.
Well, and that's what I mean by, within the contract.
Right, but yeah, a formula, or now, we've done it both ways. Where, um, when Mr. Price was city manager, we did an annual review. Uh, Mr. Schwing preferred every three years, so you might get a higher salary, you know, but you would, um, it would be every three years, so you didn't have a meeting where you guys discussed it once a year, because it's.
It's nerve-wracking.
It's never-ending. The other thing is, as far as golden parachutes, the state of Florida does not like golden parachutes. They also don't like, uh, do-not-disclose agreements. So we have a state sta- I, I was amazed at the White House, we have a state statute that prohibits, uh.
Audrey being topical.
It is, I know, I didn't realize it was topical today. Um, the, the state of Florida actually prohibits, um, prohibiting an employee from being able to say what they, you know, they believe about their, you know, when they separate from their government.
No, and I just, not, maybe it doesn't matter to some, but to me, it does matter. This is exactly what Arlene asked for, and I said, this is exactly what I will recommend. We didn't, we didn't haggle, we didn't quibble. We didn't drill down, Uncle Fred, we just had the discussion, and it was very pleasant and very straightforward.
So I think that's fair.
And a three-year, right, and a three-year contract at, at this rate and these terms, and, and what we'll do, if, if this goes forward, is then we will, at the next meeting, we'll, we'll drill down further on the details.
Or I can maybe put details in, let me just ask some questions. Uh, normally, because it's been such a short period, since the time she was interim city manager, uh, you would include that amount of time in her FRS, so they would just fix the FRS, because it's a slightly different senior management system. You're okay with me making that modification, so it starts.
You mean, you're counting the time that she's.
Exactly, it's only two or three months, but it's two or three months.
It's time, right.
Yeah, um, it would be a fixed rate, and for, you could either give the maximum of, Fred, the golden parachute maximum is twenty weeks. Um, I had in my contract a little different, I think it was one week per year, per year of service, not to exceed the twenty, but I was so close to twenty, I, I think you could go with the twenty weeks, unless you tell me otherwise.
Why doesn't Arlene just work this out with? Yeah, I mean, would, and rather than do it all here.
Twenty weeks, that sounds fine.
Oh, well, uh, she's, she's like, she's like, whatever.
And, and.
Nineteen and a half, so we can say we negotiated.
Nothing against Arlene, but I have a little issue with, um, severance things, you know, just from a conceptual point of view, but I'm not totally against it. So I think you should talk to Arlene and see what she wants and going forward.
I think that's the bottom line.
And then I also think that, uh, we need to revisit the council, how we review people. And I, we could use this as an opportunity to figure out how we're going to have a performance evaluation of our city manager, which I think is our responsibility. You know, we didn't, we weren't too successful the last time when we did it, but I think that maybe with Arlene's help, we could come up with something that's workable to all of us, so that she doesn't have to be grilled out in the public, or that we could do something and then feel we're doing our fiduciary responsibilities. Um, so I would like to just think about all those things a little bit more, but I, I didn't, I didn't like the severance packages that were in the other contracts, I still don't. Um, you, she needs some protection, um, and I think the contract does that. And if she wants to get, because if you have a three-year contract, I don't know how it's gonna, that will, we could break the contract. I mean, how is that written, that's basically.
Well, you also have the charter, which, you know, and the charter has to be somehow, would be appropriately incorporated into this thing, the charter provisions.
Absolutely, and the charter is different for, like, as, uh, Mr. Rooney pointed out today, I mean, the city attorney position, you can terminate at a regular meeting. The city manager is different, that has a hearing entitlement and everything else.
And it says indefinite term.
But you could still, you can still terminate without cost.
Right, absolutely, but.
So I mean, that's the protection side of it, that's what the severance package is.
Well, also remember, the severance is tied to getting a release from the employee. And there is a benefit, a legal benefit to having that release.
Yeah, so maybe that, maybe we should do that, but.
My only question, I'm sorry.
Explore it a little bit more, because I, this, this is the first time we started to talk about it, and I haven't really spent a lot of time thinking of it, but, but I know that it troubled me in the other contracts that we had, and if we could do it better, we can, and if we don't, then.
So better would be.
What's the process going forward, what makes, and I have a question, would you can get it done in two weeks? I mean, actually.
You can.
You can?
Yeah, you can get it done in two weeks, it's not.
Fine, I have no problem.
I know the deal points, I can slam that baby out, okay?
Okay.
All right.
And, and at the, I mean, I hate to speak out of turn, but I mean, at the end of the day, it's, it's the mayor and, and let's say you and, and Arlene getting together. That's what it was with Carl.
Right, right.
Except it was the deputy mayor at this point, so I mean, whatever you three can work out, I think should be.
Yeah, and we'll get together, of course, yeah.
Yeah.
And what I can do is I can set up something and give you, pick from item A or pick from item B, you know, type.
Options, all right, all right.
And then you guys tell me, and I'm happy with whatever the options.
Yeah. Okay, um, I'll make that motion to, in the second. Further discussion, roll call, please.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye, congratulations.
Mayor, thank you very much.
Yeah, now, one thing I wanna bring up, um, that we'll also discuss, and it may, it probably won't be ready for the next meeting, but I, I've, but been on the record, and I'll stay on the record. Um, when, when Carl was here, you had, you had Carl, you had Arlene, and you, and you had, like, a third position there. Um, in, in the interest of, in my mind, a lot of different things, talent level, compatibility, handle, uh, thinking back to a meeting I was in yesterday, handle on the issues. Um, I'm gonna make a recommendation here, and it'll be, it'll either be the next meeting, the meeting after, or whatever, we, Arlene and Audrey and I worked through, but, uh, that we make a recommendation, uh, which will be Arlene's, of an assistant city manager, but eliminating a position with, that, on staff right now. So I, I've said that before, I'll say it again, and Arlene, I don't know if you wanna say anything to that point right now.
Direction has been given that you would prefer we not hire an additional assistant city manager, that we would look through the talent we have within our organization and looked within to promote.
Right, right, correct.
So it would thereby create a difference in organizational chart, would be the removing of that position.
Right, okay, okay, great.
Um, I just wanted to make one comment on that.
Yeah, yeah.
Which is, I thought Arlene, with the help of her staff, colleagues, uh, did a great job in bringing in a very modest increase in a budget this year. And I kinda think that it should, I don't necessarily disagree with you, but I wanna make a reflection on it, which is, I really think it's up to her to figure out how to put together the most efficient operating platform. And, and to me, that's the kind of guidance I would think about, and whatever falls out, falls out. It's, that really is the quintessential management job. Uh, I think she's more than got the message from us that we wanna be efficient, because she's even ahead of us with the budget. So I'm not disagreeing as much as, there may be other moving parts in all of that. And I'd rather have her look at all the moving parts, not just like one or two.
Yeah, and just to, um, echo that or expound on a little bit, I mean, what we did here today is, I mean, with, with Audrey leaving, I mean, she does help with the green sheet, she does help with other things, and, and that's a vital role that Arlene's gonna have to take on along with another city manager, or assistant city manager, whoever she picks. She may need that extra help, whether it's whoever, I'm just saying, look at the total package.
Or it may come from one of those two employees.
Well, that's what I mean. She's gotta figure that out. She's gotta figure that out, exactly.
Okay, that all sounds great. Uh, we are now looking at item F, a discussion of the city-owned properties, the amount of available impact fees and their allowable uses. I brought this, this is eighteen oh eight oh two six seven. And I had come at this from the point of view, and of course, the news, uh, comes at it from their point of view, which is all fine. I wanted to just have a list of what we have for city-owned properties, period. Look at it as a whole, realize that there are alternatives, um, out there. We do have assets, there are other ways to make funds available. Um, there are alternatives, as, um, as we all know. So I wanted to start that discussion. We have here, obviously, the bamboo and leavened properties. Um, and in fact, Mike, I'll let you tee that off, I guess, because you're, you're here with green sheet on two specific properties, so you wanna start the discussion?
Um, yeah, those, uh, properties were purchased for economic development. I think, uh, the time is right to put them out there on the market, let's do a RFP, or RFQ, or whatever we're doing on them. But, um, the, the market's going great right now, and, you know, we, we don't wanna keep pushing this off and then have something happen, or we're in another slump, and we have to wait a decade or more to have, have something happen, so.
Right.
So let's strike while the iron's hot.
Arlene, can you, for the benefit of those that may not know, uh, these two properties, describe where they are and what they are, please?
The bamboo, the, well, the leavened lot is, is directly north of the, uh, community hall site, which is at the intersection of, um, Reynolds and Old Forty-One. Um, that was purchased, um, I think, two thousand twelve, around there. Um, it's, it's the front end of the Napa Valley, Napa Auto Parts. The bamboo parcels, uh, are, bridge both sides of Imperial River on the north and south. Um, we've had previous drafted le- uh, letters of interest for those, for that particular site. Um, what we, staff would probably recommend, since we're working through the form-based code, is, um, maybe working with DPZ to update that letter of interest and have some ideas of what we could be using. We'd probably wanna get more direction from council on, um, terms of what you'd like to look and see, and how we direct those letters of interest.
Because, of course, we'd still wanna maintain access to the river, you know, public access on, on the property, so.
I think we could give some of those directions to DPZ to, um, some of the ideas in the original form-based code that they've been looking at is maybe having, um, restaurant alley, where there's restaurants right along the river, like the San Antonio River District, um, so that there is a feel of public access, canoe and kayak access, um, along there as well, in, in, uh, incorporated. Um, they didn't necessarily, it, it's up to council's pleasure, they didn't necessarily feel that you needed to drive, um, so much residential there. Could be more of a mixed use of the residential, but really having the, uh, creation of a place, um, a destination for the downtown right there. Um, but we could actually have them provide some recommendations on how to update those RFQs. We had not pursued, I'd have to look back, I don't know that we have a draft RFQ or, uh, LOI for the leavened lot. We'd have to take a look at that, it's a much smaller parcel.
I would be in favor of going down that path, so we get some ideas from the, from the planners that we've hired to do that. And when we started that, I did, uh, do an internet search, I don't have it with me, but there are many, many examples of development along rivers throughout the country that I think we can use as models, and I would hope that DPZ would provide some of those. And I think we need more than, say, you need access to the river, because we have an experience in the, in the week's fish camp, where we have in, um, uh, the comprehensive plan that we should have water access, and we may not be getting the kind of water access that we want, so we, we need a lot more than that. We need something that's more, um, directive. Uh, and I do think if you do form-based code, or a for- for, form-based development down there, you can assure that whatever happens along the river is either someplace to walk. I mean, it was suggested that we make a park out of it, I'm not sure, I'm interested in doing that, but some combination of very substantial public access, either to the river or usage. And that could be through restaurants, where you walk along a boardwalk, or some kind of thing, and then ha- have activity down there. I think that, that is a treasure, so I would not be too cavalier about just saying, tell me your ideas and go. I think we need to be somewhat directive there.
I think you can look to provide a vision of what you, what the council feels it needs to go, and then that could be utilized in the letter of interest or RFQ. Um, additionally, you'll probably need to be looking at beyond zoning, some covenances and restrictions, so that we ensure that those, as redevelopment occurs, that, that there's some kind of other governance within the land to ensure. And this was some of the things that DPZ suggested they had done with City Place on the other coast, where the city owned the property, and then they did letters of interest out, but they created covenances, restrictions that certain areas were public spaces, um, in essence, public spaces, but privately owned.
And I agree with everything Amy said, and the other thing is, there are a lot of ways to monetize property. One is a sale, one is, there, there are various ways to do it. So, um, I would leave that open too.
Right, right, 'cause I mean, when I, when I look at, like, the assessed value of that property, I like, think it's way low, right? I think we all know it's way low, but that's, 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 um.
Like, that, that's kinda my question, is going from what Mike's saying, are we, are we looking to liquidate this, to subsidize the budget, or are we looking to kickstart it? And the reason I say it that way is because if, if we're so restricted that we want a two-story restaurant that walking along the be- or walk along the river is what we want there, and that's the only thing to go there, we're really limiting who we're gonna go out and look at. Now, at the end of the day, whether we sell it to liquidize it, to have cash on hand until we get our FEMA money, they're still gonna have to go through the community development gauntlet, whatever we put down there, 'cause it's already zoned something.
That, well, it's a little different if we're the city, but, okay.
Well, I'm just saying, or do we wanna be the landlord? Do we wanna be the stewards of it? Do we wanna say, all right, it's now open, here's, whatever, ten acres, show us what you got. We're gonna hold the property, you're gonna lease it from us, you're gonna add a certain amount, like Baron Collier does with a bunch of their properties. You can lease it, put your building on it, we own the land underneath it, and at the end of the day. So I'm just, my question is. So, I'm just, my question is, is what is our true intent? Is it to liquidate it, to have the cash? Is it to get something kick-started and get something built down there? What's our true intention for these properties?
Well, I think my true intention, and, you know, I brought this forward along with some others on different pieces of property, my intention is to do both. We have great momentum going on downtown right now, we're land banking right now at the moment. The market is good, we have a lot of momentum down there, so I don't want to land bank forever, and as somebody said, you know, the economy is good, you look at what we've got going on down there, so in that vein, yes, I'd like to keep the momentum going, and the reality is, we voted, there again, another four to three vote, but we voted not to increase the mill rate, not to increase certain taxes, and we do have some economic realities.
Well, and that's kind of what I'm getting at, is no matter if we lease it back to pick some, pick an entity, we lease it back to them, or we sell it to them, they're still going to have to come through this board to put what they want there. Look what the East Terry Assemblies went through over the last four or five months. So, you know, to say, okay, let's sell the Bamboo property to Bobby Hunter and Associates, and he wants to put a, you know, a monstrosity there, a nightclub, it's still going to go through community development.
A rifle range.
And it's not going to, it's not going to go through there, it's still going to come through this board. So, if we're looking to, like you talking about a little bit, Mayor, about subsidizing the budget with this land, we're land banking, we've got a bunch of land, we'll liquidate some of it. Mike's saying it right, it's time to sell, if something happens, you know, especially with this blue-green algae, with whatever's going on, and the red tide, property values may start to go down, it may be the time to sell it now, or we may be sitting on it for another...
Well, I think Arlene laid out a pretty good pathway forward to split this issue and to try to liquidate it, in a sense, that's going to bring home the vision for downtown.
I don't disagree with that, I'm just saying, when you do it that way...
Yeah.
You've now limited the scope of somebody buying it.
Absolutely. I mean, if you wanted to just liquidate it...
But we might want to.
If you, if, well, hang on, if you wanted to just, sorry, but if you want to just liquidate it, you put a 20-story apartment building there and take home a lot of money, that is not what the people of Benita Springs want to have.
I don't disagree with that.
So, I think...
But they can't put a 20-story building there without coming through this council.
Yeah, but I think what the people have been, I don't think we're disagreeing, but I hope not, I think what the people of Benita are looking for, our residents, who spent the $25 to $30 million down there, has been, from the beginning, something special, not just a fire sale liquidation. And I don't hear, I don't hear you suggesting that.
No, nobody is.
No, him, I'm talking about people.
Yeah, no, no.
Well, I'm not saying that either, I'm saying at the end of the day, it's still going to come through here, whether we call it a fire sale and we get rid of it right now...
Yeah, but we don't want to waste people's time. So, I think what we've got to do, I think she laid out a very sensible pathway forward, I don't know what's really, the pathway forward is what she just, she, Arlene, just laid out, and it's consistent with what Peter's saying, we're not going to sell at any cost, it's not here, it's for sale, come all bidders, and then we're saying, well, no, we don't want a 20-story building or something like that.
Well, I'm saying it's not zoned, I'm saying it's already zoned for something now.
Yeah, but we control the zoning.
Huh?
We control the zoning.
And that's, you're exact, that's my point.
Well, that's why if you come up with a vision of what you want...
Right, that's what we're doing.
With people who have been around the block, which DPZ is not Joe Schmo, all right, people who have been around the block, people who did Fifth Avenue South, and a whole bunch of other projects, to come up with something, I mean, I remember when Peter was running for, I think, council, he was talking about San Antonio downtown as an, just as one example. So, we got to shoot high, at the same time as trying to reap the rewards of getting money. Now, shut up.
I know, and Greg, and I don't know, I'm just trying to, I think I'm, I'm trying to listen with both ears, are you saying it's problematic because we own the land, and we control the zoning, and we control the process?
I'm not saying it's problematic, I'm saying that we could sell to whomever we want, get the highest dollar right now from, whether it's Fred Forbes, or any one of us in Associates.
You wouldn't get a lot from me.
Let them figure out what they want there, let them figure out what they want there, we still have the, we still have the final say.
Sure.
Instead of saying, we want a Starbucks there, and that's the only thing that's going to go there, now you've just limited your pool of people that's going to go out and try and purchase it.
We need to see options.
It's a marriage, I mean, let's face it, it, yeah, it really is a marriage, no two ways about it.
We can put out a vision, like, these are the aspects we'd like to see there.
Right.
Bring forward what your plan is, and, you know, this is what we're looking for, but...
Right.
It's a marriage and it's a negotiation, you know? Right?
There you go.
Yeah, a marriage and a negotiation, and everything else under the sun.
I do have, I do have some, a little disagreement with some of the things that you said, Greg, is because there is clear that there are zoning regulations, and we have all our little boxes and all that other stuff, but it really is, does not guarantee that the evolution of any development down there will do the things that I thought everybody wanted, which is this really fabulous waterfront, whatever it is, you know? And this is a jewel, this property we have down there is a jewel. So, any effort we could make upfront to be sure that that vision is executed in a way that we thought we were going to get, I think would be positive. Other areas along downtown, I wouldn't be so concerned about, because we'd sort of let the developer come in and do their dreams, just like Tony did, he did his dream, you know? But I think they need guidance, and again, I refer you back to the week's fish camp, which we haven't even talked about, because it's, there's not even an application, but we know what we went through as, not me, because I wasn't on, but the council went through, with their vision that they thought they had in the zoning, they thought they had in the comprehensive plan, and now they're struggling because the vision is different, all right? What they thought they had in the regulation was not what was coming from the developers. I don't want that to happen downtown, and I do want to explore alternatives, concepts that we see all over the country. We would be foolish not to see what people have done every place else, and it's not hard to do, and I have the list at home, I'll get it out, you just can click on them and take a look at them, and take what you'd like from this guy, and take what you look from this guy, say, let's make that the vision, and I would hope that that's what DPZ would do. But, so that's the first issue. The second issue is, I think we need to talk, totally separate from this, the concept of selling assets, and what we're doing this for. Are we doing this because we're cash-strapped, or whatever? We need to think about whether that's a path we want to go down. When we look at this 2854 of these, or whatever we have, I would like to understand the nature of those properties, what role they may have in any kind of plans we have, how we acquired them, and if there's truly surplus, like we do from time to time, then I would be in favor of getting rid of them if we can, just so we wouldn't have to have them on the thing. But if they're, they are part of a possibility of we're utilizing it for city purposes, I'm not in favor of selling them, and I'm certainly not in favor of selling assets to raise cash at this time, because, you know, I'm going to be facetious, we're not Venezuela, I think we're much better than that. And we voted the other day to raise taxes, I was on the, not on the prevail, not to raise taxes, on the prevailing side, but I think that we, as a city and a council, can orchestrate this problem that we have here, if we fully understand our financial positions, which we will talk later on. Are we a cash-fault problem, are we an asset problem? We have to really understand that financial aspect, which is totally boring, you know, unless you're a financial geek. But if we understand what we're trying to fix, then I think we'll come to a good solution. So, I would not even be in favor of selling any of these other stuff unless we fully understand what the heck they're for.
Well, let me say, Pete, I assume that list is, or Arlene, that's just a list of every city property.
Yeah.
Right.
So, there's no suggestion we're going to sell all that?
No.
So, I think what you're saying is correct.
We understood that this was just to provide the list, and at staff level, we would want the opportunity to review each of these parcels and see what they're being utilized for.
And I started at Google, and the first thing I got was a dog park.
Is it, there, one specific thing is being proposed for sale, isn't there, one of these, I think?
Well, Bamboo and Levin.
No, I thought, I thought Fred...
That's the next one.
...went forward. He has a specific one, which I have no idea what it's there, or what house, it's a house or something, we got a picture of a house.
Sure.
I mean, I don't know what that is, you know?
So, let's, let's stick to item one, Amy, and I think your point is very well taken, absolutely. Mike, do you want to, Fred, oh, I'm sorry, you want, go ahead.
Well, everybody's, I think we do need a vision, but you've got to remember, as soon as you say, for example, restaurant row, two stories high, developer looks at that, they're going to look at how much traffic does it take to support what they're building? 41 is not a real wide street, more importantly, if you, if you say that's all you want, that's going to put the value of that property down to where if you would allow even two or three stories of whatever above it, it's going to get you more money for the property. So, are we going to put a vision out and then say, what will you pay for the land for that vision, so you can build it? Or you're going to set a price minimum, that you have to say you'll pay or more, and then agree to build our vision? Which way are you going?
I'm going to go, I'm going to go with the vision, and I'll tell you why, because you're starting out with zero. If we do nothing with it, it's a park, and we get nothing from it, all right? And we'll just keep it, and it'll be a thing. So, we have to have a vision that is viable, first of all, and deliver, because the alternative, Fred, is to do what Peter O'Flynn said, was just put a big, the biggest building you can fit on there with as many residents as possible, and you get the biggest return, because that's the return you're going to get from the developer.
You know what, we're talking in exaggerations. I said...
Well, no, I'm not talking exaggerating.
If you let DPZ work a little bit, and don't say it's got to be two stories, and I want this...
Fred, I'm not trying to cut you off, Arlene, can you lay out what you said again before, so we can reel this back in to where it needs to be?
DPZ does have experience with other municipal or county-owned properties...
And that's why we hired them.
...with the redevelopment of those, and they have probably many different options of different patterns of how you could go. And at a very high level, they mentioned you might want to create a sense of place or a true destination on that parcel as the heart and center of our community, and in that essence, you may not want to fill it completely with residential uses. There might be a smaller mix of the mixed use, and maybe the mixed use is not the most prominent building. Also entailing, they also mentioned looking at how you can best integrate the public into the river space, and how, even though it is a privately-owned property, it's fully public access, and there's ways to construe the covenances and restrictions and things, and providing such, not just the form-based code, but so if sales of property turn over, you're ensuring that where you're looking at is those, those properties still provide that open access space. But they could provide some recommendations on that and some visions, and then that could be implemented in an LOI or an RFQ. I think also, the fact of what the vision is, they might have some opportunistic suggestions of who we might should send the RFQ to, who are experienced developers, who've done these types of projects before. So, we would have, be able to outreach to them and send some outreach to them.
And for anybody, and I've used this term, I'm dating myself again with Flash Gordon, but anybody thinks we're going to go down this road flying blind in a rocket cycle, they're sadly mistaken. We've hired experts to help us with this, I think we need to give them, and give the public at large, and developers, and business people, do we want to just land bank forever and say, no, this is our land, and we're going to hang on to it and do nothing with it? Or do we want to give, say, no, we'd like to look and see what we can do down here to continue this momentum that we have going downtown, and look at possible uses for this land? In my mind, it's nothing more, nothing less. Or we can sit here and talk about it for three years and still disagree and have nothing done.
I think it might be helpful, since this is such a jewel in our community, to somehow integrate a public process with this as well, so the public can take part, feel part of that vision, and we could talk with DPZ about that, so that we can receive that feedback, because I think this is so important to the community, this particular piece.
Absolutely, have workshops, charrettes, all those things we like to do, have people come in, make some suggestions, have us, you know, discuss it, dissect it, dissect the dissection, but get the process started, and really, that's how I look at it.
I second that motion.
Okay, yeah, 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 yeah.
I second the motion.
Well, Mike, and for these two properties, I guess we have to, yeah, okay, there's been a motion and a second.
So, you're talking about the Bamboo, do you also want to include the Levin property in that as well?
Levin is a small, but why not? Have them look at it.
Absolutely, so there's been a motion and a second. Audrey, anything on your end that we need to tighten up? Okay, further discussion, roll call, please.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman Dwyer?
Aye.
Great, thanks, council. Item two, discussion of city-owned property located at 103-71 West Terry Street, this is Councilman Fred Forbes, green sheet 18-08-02-79. Fred?
There is a ranch-style, it's actually brick veneered, home on the southeast corner of the intersection of Terry and Imperial Parkway. The city acquired it several years ago, more than several, when they were widening Terry and Imperial Parkway, I guess, was being built. It's currently being rented for $600 a month. Now, Don Thompson just tracked, had a property right next door to it, and it just sold last year for...
This isn't that property.
Pardon?
The picture of this house is not...
It's not that property, yeah, this isn't, this isn't the house.
What is?
This is on the north side of West Terry, by North Riverside Drive, is what's in here.
The one I'm talking about is down at, down at Terry and Imperial.
That's not this property that you got a picture of.
No, the one on the green sheet is actually near the, the community pool and rec center. It is a house that we do get $600 a month for, and the park maintenance staff are the ones that were basically the landlord.
All right.
The other houses...
Still there.
What about the other house?
There's a, the house that we, that we acquired used to be Harvey Ains', is at the corner of Imperial and Terry, is still there.
Right.
There we go.
Matt Feeney, hello.
Matt Feeney. What's going on?
I know just enough to be dangerous.
Dangerous, all right, lay it on us, buddy, what do you got?
But the house that you're referring to, Councilman Forbes, was purchased, as you said, as part of the Imperial Parkway widening, but later it was traded for a different property.
Oh, for traded, okay.
And so, it's, it's a private residence, the city doesn't own it.
Well, let's sell it again.
Yeah.
Now, let's just sell this one.
I had no comment.
Like Chicago, vote often, vote to it.
Right.
We do, yes, we do own the property in question that you're looking at, this is a piece of property that we do own.
This, this house here.
And it is next to, it's about three or four houses down from the community pool.
And it's a month-to-month lease, and it was done that way on purpose, in case the city needed to move quickly for some reason. We just, if this is a direction that council would like to go, we want to have the opportunity to work with Alta, just to ensure that there is, because originally, it was just some discussion about drainage for the use, so we want to make sure that there's no need for the Terry Street project, that this parcel would be a part of that in any way.
For retention or something?
Yeah, for retention, oh. Which would be removal of the home, so that might be something we would need to move forward.
Well, I totally agree with that approach, you know, to figure out what, why do we got it, or what it might be good for, before we even consider selling it, that's a good suggestion.
Don't we own the other property that's just off of Pine? Not the one on the corner of Pine, but the one next east of that, that would be...
Had to move the landlord out of the way. Matt, again, for the record, we own, we own the corner lot, several lots, there's three, I believe, in that little stretch between Pine Avenue and the railroad, along West Terry Street, that were purchased for a different project along West Terry for water retention, but they may still serve a value in the project for, that Alta's looking at, really, in the build grant portion, because their, their project limit stops at Pine for a widened multi-use path, so we would like to have the opportunity to talk to them to see what impacts those would have.
Can I make a suggestion, instead of spitballing individual properties today, have city management, meaning writ large, go through it, as Amy suggested, scrub it, come back and say, these are candidates for sale?
And you might want to look at rent, if we're going to continue to rent this, because that's way below market.
Yes, yes.
What'd you say, it was month-to-month, they said?
Yeah.
It's a month-to-month lease.
But I mean, you can't get a one-bedroom for 800, and this is a three-bedroom for 600.
Affordable housing.
Okay.
Right, right, right.
We'll add it to our affordable housing pool.
Ah.
Yeah, but there's something, well, there's something to say about month to month.
There is for a, well, oh, that's true too. Enough said.
Right.
And I think.
I second that direction.
Yeah, no, and I think you, Arlene, you have sufficient direction?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Okay, thanks, team. We are now going to move on to a public hearing. And public comment is allowed and it says so right there, so I don't want to incringe on anybody. Item A, adopt a resolution approving petition. You know what? I'll let somebody else read this. How's that? Public hearing, public comment is allowed and this is item 10A. Hello?
Good afternoon. Um, there's, the request and motion is to adopt a resolution approving petition to vacate that utility easement shown over the western 10 feet of Lot 1 on the unrecorded plat of Tarpon Bend as recorded with the clerk of court for Lee County, Florida, in deed book 296, page 16. This is simply a utility easement that the petitioner seeks to vacate in order to combine the lots to, I believe, build a house? To build a house.
Okay. Counsel?
So moved.
Second.
Third.
Okay, we have a motion and a second and now we're going to allow for public comment? Members of the public that would like to speak on this? Okay, seeing none? Roll call, please.
Hello, Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Councilman Duitt?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye. Thank you very much. We're now going to move on to item 11. This is a second reading and public hearing. The following ordinances and public comments also allowed here.
One moment, please.
We have two ordinances today. I'm going to read both title block, well, I'll read the first one into the record. This is an ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida relating to increasing the local communication services tax rate, providing for intent, providing for increased local communication services tax rate, providing for notice to the Department of Revenue, providing for severability, providing for an effective date. This is the second reading of the ordinance. The first reading was held on August 1st. On this particular ordinance, it is time sensitive due to the fact that the ordinance needs to be into the Department of Revenue before September 1st. If council wants to proceed by January 1st. I do want to point out that should council approve this, I received comments from our finance director that the motion should also allow staff to increase the fiscal year 2019 general fund revenue budget as follows. For the communications services tax general fund, increase the revenue by $267,000 to reflect eight months of revenues, revenue for this increase in 20, fiscal year 2019.
If it's not done now, what is our next opportunity to do it, Audrey?
Next year. I mean, you could adopt, if you adopt it September 5th, you can put it in for fiscal year 2015, for fiscal year 2020 if you want.
Counsel?
Well, I'd like to have a, a, a different thoughtful discussion about this because it's obviously not going to pass. We don't have the votes, it looks like. I mean, Paul always said last time, maybe I'm wrong.
Maybe he changed his mind.
Uh, sorry?
Maybe somebody changed their mind.
She's reserving the right to change your mind. I don't know, I'm just.
Right, right, so.
Me too, I'm reserving it.
Okay, well, all right, so let's, let's, let's save talking about tax and spend and all that stuff, okay? And just talk about substance here for a second. My, my question is, and let's say irrespective of this. Last year, when we were talking about going to Tallahassee, the feedback we had was we needed matches, right? And I don't mean strike matches. Substantial amounts of money. Now we have in, what actually we have going to FEMA for mitigation, right? The, the thing that was sent out by our staff, a piece of very good work last Friday with Shante, whatever her organization is. We have in there projects that are extremely important, that we want to get the money for, like Quinn Downs. And that's on the one side, the famous Quinn, the people who were really whacked badly. As well as east, west of Imperial, what we call South Dean. And other projects as well that right there show matches in the several millions of dollars. And my only point, not to have a big deliberation about taxes here, all right? My only point is, I don't know where that money's coming from. When, when, when I look at our budget, and I'm more than happy to be enlightened. When, when I, I'm not saying I'm right or wrong, I'm more than happy to be enlightened. When I look at our budget, we've got project, yeah, Logan, that's booked, that's there, assuming we get money, all right? Same thing with Pine Lake. Matches in there for Pine Lake. But the match is not in there for the current or past years with respect to these projects. So I'm just scratching my head and saying, guys, what's our way forward? I don't want to have a whole debate, with all respect, about, you know, who's for taxes, who's not for taxes. I just want to have, and it doesn't have to be today, some idea from my colleagues on council as to what they think. Are we going to borrow that money? Or am I wrong? Is, is, is the money actually there? I hope, you know, and I'm missing it somewhere. So it's just, it's just a, an observation. I'm trying to get away from, call it what you want, to the, the hard stuff about we've got critical things having to do with flooding, where we're pushing agendas. It's a lot of hard work last year. We didn't, weren't successful. But if we were successful, again, with respect to those or had been, or with respect to these, exactly where we, it's just a question. But it's a serious question.
Right. Well, I think it poses the question, okay, if we do get these, or just like even last, at, at the last meeting, we didn't have it in there for Spring Creek. Well deserved, well needed. We've been banking on Spring Creek, but we just spent 340, 360, money we didn't know where it was going to come from. And now we're getting ready to do it again.
So I'd love to take the conversation down to a financial problem solving. I know Peter does not ever want to raise taxes. I respect him for that. All right? But, um, and yeah, we can get some money out of some property, so we're not going to get this type of money. And frankly, even if we had done the pit and sub raise, which was 25 bucks on $250,000, that would have given us a million. It would have started to build. And it's the same thing with these, with these. So I, I don't think we're at the point where we can just say, we gotta just live within our means. What do you mean? That's not directed at you. I'm just saying, what do we mean? So I guess my view is, and I don't expect people to answer this today, because I don't have an answer. What in the world is the path forward?
I do have one quick question for Audrey, based on, on the conversation. If we do this ordinance today, goes into effect January 1st, correct?
Correct.
Between now and January, if we get FEMA money, if we find a, a bag of money somewhere.
You're asking, can you pull it?
Can we pull it?
I would have to check with Department of Revenue. I don't know if Ann knows the question because this time is to help the communications folks mobilize. And so that's the reason why we have such a, a long lead time. I would imagine it could be pulled and there might be a refund on their tax, a refund on their taxes.
Or we could pull it next year, instead of it sunsetting in 2023, we could lower it next year by X.
And I could do that so that instead of it reading 20, um, effective 2023, it'd be effective January 1st, 2022, to go back to the 1.7 rate now.
Well, can I ask a question? Do we have till the next meeting? I prefer for council to think about what I said and come back and say, Peter, you are totally wrong. Here's the money. All right? So stop it. Here's the money.
Peter, I had a conversation with, I hate to put words in Arlene's mouth, but that was one of the things that I had a conversation with, a very good meeting with her and with Matt Feeney. And we, we do have some money for the projects that you articulated, but we do not have money for the other things. And one of the things, we, we looked at whether you could adjust the timing and all this other stuff. But it's the near, we have a near term problem, you know, for a variety of reasons. And that's why I'm the one that said we should do this because especially if you put in a sunset, it's going to roll off. Because I agree to a certain extent with what Mike said is that once you raise the taxes, it's really hard to go backwards, you know, because things happen. So from a strategic point of view, this provides this, I don't know if it's even a cushion, but this flexibility to do the projects, particularly for the water projects. This is our life. I mean, this is our life here in the council. We might want to do all these little things, you know, get the beautification at the interchange.
Yeah, we're not, that's not.
But our life is water management. And it's going to be our life for the next three to four years, whether FEMA comes back or not. These are the kinds of projects that if we're going to do what's right for this community, it's going to be addressing those issues, those mitigation things. And we have tier one projects, which will probably be funded, but we have the whole tier two projects.
That's what I was listing, tier two.
Will be likely be funded. So if we don't, if we don't provide for those tier two projects, what are we doing, you know? I, I think it's really important.
I just wonder if we could defer this and have council think about it and when we have a full house, Laura's not here.
But we can't defer.
September 1st, our next meeting.
We have to do it by September 1st. We have no meetings.
Well, and we do have a $6 million IOU from FEMA. If we do a line of credit to hold us over until we get that money, then we, how much money are we talking about for tier two?
I just eyeballed it as, and I can give you the numbers, but I, I did also talk to Arlene about it and the numbers could be larger than this. All right, so, and by the way, I'll answer your question, but we may need this money quick, even if we raise this money here. You know, if, which you wouldn't vote for, because you can call it a hidden tax. I don't mean a pejoratively, but so you call it, all right, but you wouldn't vote for it. I, I, I still have the question. But, but the numbers are 1.5, 1.8, 2.5, 2.3, add them up. And they could be more. Those are the matches. And what I've been led to understand from talking to Arlene as well, is that what's going to happen in tier two is there'll be people who can't afford stuff. Oh, oh, does that ring a bell? And then the money will shake loose and the guy who's there with the match and ready to roll will get the money. So that's where I think we need to be. And my issue with the debt is I don't like hocking up the city. I, I think it's just, you know, in, in the federal government, you're next, they say the next generation is paying for it. We already have $3.6 million a year in our budget out of an operating expense load of about 14 million. We had the whole debate before and I don't want to go through that all again, hearing about Puntagorda and all that. But what I'm saying is, I don't have an answer, Mike. But I do know, I believe, I'm in the minority. I believe we've got to raise the money to start to build to have it. And I don't believe that's the way to go. Or have somebody look at this and say, this is one person looking at it, me. I don't know it all. Have, have somebody else, maybe it's with staff, say, Peter, you're wrong. Here's, here's where the money is.
But, but if you raise the taxes, you're going to get a million in a year from now. You know, like you said, what if the money shakes loose and you need the money now?
Right, well, it's a start.
You need this bridge loan.
It's a start. All right, well, then you need a funding mechanism to pay back. I just want it to be thought through as opposed to, I don't believe in, who here believes in taxes? Who wants the?
Don't do it.
You know? We know Simmons will never vote for taxes. We know that.
He was just going to look at me.
I'm just looking at Duitt, yeah, right, busting his chops.
We know Simmons will never vote for, we, that's a given, all right? That's a price we all pay. We're happy to pay the price.
Yep.
Exactly.
But, um.
But Peter, your point's well taken, right? I mean, here we are, we've got decisions to make and we're on a timeline and we're having the discussion. And it, it would be nice if it were easy, wouldn't it? That, that it was obvious how to go about this.
Well, let me ask you this. It's easy, everybody could do it.
Yeah, right.
Let me ask you this. Is there a way to approve this today but not finally approve it? Well, I guess where you were going, Greg, or, or like back out of it? In other words, to give ourselves, because I want other people, if they have the time, to address what I'm saying. I, I'd love to be proven wrong. I'll make the point for the fifth time. Yeah, but I, like you said, we've looked at it, we've had two budget workshops, we've talked about it. Not that I hate to say it, I don't think you're wrong. I don't think, I, it's not there. We, we've spent $9 million of unassigned fund balance with the intent of only getting the three, or 6 million of it back.
Plus the three of the other loan that was.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, is that we didn't have that kind of savings account to start with. So it's not there. It's not hidden somewhere, it's not over here somewhere, it's not reallocated. I mean, it's one of those things and.
I think Amy and I both said it at the, when we were doing the millage rate. Something's got to give. Either we're going to have to do some little bit, whether it's land, whether it's hidden taxes or whether it's real taxes. And it can go down and I'll use the fire district. The fire district's taxes are going down.
Right.
I mean, right now, we're getting ready to propose a millage decrease. So they can go down.
Right.
Depending on the projects you decide to fund in the future. It went down when Councilmember Forbes was there. It, it can. And again, we've got these two set the sunset. Set the sunset. And nothing says that if we get that $6 million IOU, we can't sunset it early. It's a stroke of a pen. It's a, it's a four to three vote to get rid of it.
Okay.
In, in my opinion, before that. Just like it, it would be if we don't have it by 2023, it's a four to three vote to keep it going till 2025. So at this time, I mean, just so you put our money where our mouth is, I'll make the motion to approve this one because it's got to be done by September 1st.
I'll second it. She seconded it.
Okay, there's been a motion to approve and a second. Is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Is Laura on the phone?
Where's Laura? She's not. She's not filling in. Do you want me to try to see if I can?
Well, no, she hasn't heard the whole discussion.
Yeah, she, yeah, yeah.
And again, per the motion, if, if the ordinance passes, staff has the authority, or requesting staff has the authority to increase the general fund appropriately for this ordinance.
Correct.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Gibson?
No.
Councilman Forbes?
No.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Councilman Duitt?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
No.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
It's 3-3. Motion fails.
Right.
You're four, okay. Four dead.
Is that, we're up to item B now, I believe?
Okay, and item B is another ordinance and this has been advertised. The clerk has a copy of the affidavit publication.
Yeah.
From in her office, it's on file. And I'll read the title block into the record. This is an ordinance of the city of Benita Springs amending ordinance number 0008, adjusting the rate of the Florida Power and Light Company non-exclusive electric utility franchise, providing for payments to the city of Benita Springs and providing for an effective date. This is second reading of the ordinance. The first reading of the ordinance was held on August 1st. I want to point out that we do have in the audience Charlotte Miller from Florida Power and Light. So should the ordinance pass, she is here if you have any questions about the franchise or any questions to Charlotte on anything, feel free to ask her.
This can, this can be deferred. This is not time sensitive.
This can be deferred. This, yeah, this is a rolling date. So whatever date council does it, either me or the next attorney may get a little snippity if we have to keep adjusting the dates. Similar to road impact, we had to keep adjusting the dates whenever we had a continuance. There may be some snippity, but that's between you and council. But similar, if it does, we would want, if this ordinance passed, we'd want to increase the electrical franchise fee general fund revenue by $583,000 to reflect 10 months of revenue from the increase in fiscal year 2019. I want to point out to you that a full year at a 1% increase generates approximately $700,000 in revenue per the finance director.
If we have to defer this, should we do it at a time date so you don't have to readvertise?
Yes, please.
Pick one. Pick a date.
I'd like to defer it. I'll make the motion to defer it till September 17th at the budget hearing.
Okay. Oh, yeah, that's a good time to do it. Second.
Okay. Does that work? Do we need a vote on that?
So, September 17th at 5:00 PM?
Yes.
Or after 5:00 PM?
We can do that, I mean, the city council meeting is after that meeting, so.
Right, at 5:00 PM or at any time thereafter.
Okay.
At city council chambers.
And could you clarify on both these things, even though the other one lost, whether you, we could just lower the rate even if it was in place?
Are you mean lowering it?
Like if we had this going and then we decided, oh, we're going to, we don't need it anymore because the FEMA money came in, can we just do it?
We'll get a tax check back from FEMA in April for $6 million.
Okay.
Well, Greg, Duitt.
Charlotte, FPL will answer that question for me.
Good afternoon.
Hello, Charlotte.
Hi, how are you? For the record, Charlotte Miller, FPL External Affairs. To address that question, FPL's franchise agreement states that you are able to change the percentage once per year. So if you.
Either up or down.
Up or down, right. If you go up, it can be a maximum of 1%. If you go down, there's no requirement on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Calendar year or?
Charlotte, if I can ask a question on that. If we, if council decided to nullify the ordinance before things went into effect, could council do so?
Since you asked, since that was discussed on the first question, I have a question on that as well. I am not aware of that being done before, so I'll consult our senior counsel, Pat Ryan, and I'll let you know that either later this afternoon or tomorrow. Pat Ryan, and I'll let you know that either later this afternoon or tomorrow, all right? You're welcome. Yes, the reason for that is, once that's passed, the ball starts rolling to set up, set up the whole process, but let me check on that for you.
Thank you.
And that was a rolling calendar year, not, it's a rolling year, not a calendar year?
Correct, that is correct. It'd be from the date of the ordinance.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second for September 17th. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCrumba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Duett?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Okay. Anything else, Audrey? You're good for now?
I believe I am.
I think you are. Okay, dynamite. Public comment, members of the public that would like to speak, please come forward at this time. Hey, John, how are you?
John West, for the record. I want to congratulate Arlene for being promoted to city manager, and I'd like to suggest that regarding properties owned by the city, that you make a list of them, when they were bought, what they were bought for, and have they ever been valued, what was the valuation price. I think it would be good for the public to know what they're worth, before we go to market and try and sell them. The other thing is, I am disappointed with the result of the outsourcing. I didn't like the way this thing started off, and I didn't like the way it ended, but the way it ended, I have no control over it, it's up to you to decide what you do. The thing is, there is a bit of a bad smell, you know, about the way this contract was given to three people who you're palé with, and then you kind of probably at the end feel obligated to take their advice. Now, they recommended Gray Robinson, and they said that they are the best qualified, and I don't think that they are, they haven't shown that they are the best qualified. They have 300 attorneys in, on their books, but how many cities have they got that they are dealing with that it's in the top 150 bracket? Two. And that's not good enough, you know, to show that they are the best qualified. Why Sirota? They sent in almost identical estimate or application, and they were not asked, I don't think they were asked, to give a further quote to make, see if they could give it anything cheaper. And so, that's that. The other thing is, cone of silence. We heard Mr. Rooney describing how he contacted Audrey here to find out how the operation went in her department. And I don't think that that is right. I believe that the cone of silence exists until you get the thing on your desk. So, that's what I have to say.
Great.
I think the cone of silence was broken.
Thank you, John. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, city attorneys report?
None to really report on. I do want to point out, the special magistrate in the WCI breach of contract case does have a recommended order, it's a little premature to talk about it, but I will provide you with a copy of it and some information on it.
Okay. Thank you, Audrey. We are going to move on to the city managers' report. Arlene?
Yes, before you, we have an extension for the contract for lobbying services, and Ashley and Carol are here in the audience today. This is, this was a continuation of the three-year contract that was originally signed in August of 2015, and this is for a one-year extension of that contract.
Okay.
We did want to update you that we did have a meeting, Matt Feeny and myself had a meeting with Carol and Ashley, and we're beginning to look at the legislative priorities as well, and looking at what opportunities there are. And then I also had a call with the director of BSU, as we looked, asked to look into what opportunities there are for the sewer septic tanks, and we've forwarded Carol's information to BSU as well to review and continuing conversation there. So we'll bring back more recommendations.
So you're looking for a motion?
Correct.
Oh, so moved. Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second to renew for 12 months, one year? Okay, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman McCrumba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Duett?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Wonderful, absolutely. Thank you very much. Look forward to our continued work together. Thank you so much. Okay, Arlene?
At the previous meeting, council had asked to bring forward the terms for a letter of interest for the line of credit, and Andy is here in the audience as well, and Audrey is there, and so we wanted some direction from council, if you wanted to move forward with this at this time, or if you wanted to have the materials prepared.
I thought it was on a consent agenda.
This was, but the mayor had, and Councilwoman McCrumba had asked that we put this on there.
Oh, okay, sorry.
So it was pulled from the consent.
For discussion.
Okay, I got to find it.
Hello, Ann, how are you? 18-08-02-68, yeah, right.
How you doing? Fine. Ann Wright, Finance Director. Audrey and I did meet with, or through telephone, our financial advisor, as well as the attorney who's assisted with debt issuances in the past.
Ann, I'm sorry, bond counsel.
No, I couldn't hear, I can't hear what you're saying. We did have a telephone conversation with our financial advisor, as well as our bond counsel, and discussed terms for an RFP to be released, to get basically proposals from banks and other financial institutions. And so we spelled it out with a three-year term is what they said generally a line of credit would be, and subject to renewal, but a three-year term, and we used a $5 million amount. The line of credit would be taxable and tax exempt, which means it's tied to the use of the draw. So when you draw on the line of credit, if it's drawn for a purpose that can be tax exempt, it would be tax exempt. That typically would give you a lower interest rate, be a little more favorable, although Sanibel's was all taxable, and the rate that they had to start with is very reasonable. And it would be payable from legally available non-advalorem revenues and FEMA reimbursements. And if it's drawn upon, the interest is payable monthly, and it's intended to be used in the event of another disaster, and for other legally allowable purposes, any draws on the line of credit will require a supermajority vote of city council, which was part of the motion at last meeting. The expected issuance costs that will need to be paid by the city will be approximately $50,000, and attached is a budget transfer in order to put that in place if council wants to move forward with this. And the ordinance to approve this line is tentatively scheduled for, I guess, September 17th, as opposed to September 19th, and it's tied to when we can get a proposal on the street, and when they can be reviewed and have basically a document pulled together, an ordinance that would have the specifics.
Okay.
Could you, I just have a few clarifications for how this works, okay? Generally, from the time that you do the RFPs, until you can get to an agreement and an issuance, takes how long?
On a financing, I think they wanted to allow, they wanted to allow like two weeks.
They wanted it to be out on the street at least two weeks.
So they need to prepare the procurement, of course, we need your authorization before they do so. They'll put it out on the street, two weeks for them to submit, then after they do so, because the bank terms may be apples and oranges, they need to do some comparisons to make sure, at which point they would then have a potential, which bank, we could do the first reading of the ordinance, because again, as you heard me say many times, I'm surprised you're not repeating after me, the charter requires borrowing money by ordinance, and we would need to know the name of the bank. Bond counsel and I did discuss not having the bank in the title block, and we could do so by doing that and then a resolution, but it started getting kind of crazy. So that's why you have different tentative dates there, it seems longer, but we need that time in order for our finance advisor to give us good qualitative response.
So from the time that we said we need to do this, it would take about a month to get a line of credit operating?
For the shopping, we would then bring back to you a proposed ordinance for first reading with who, the financial, Julie Santa Maria at RBC Capital Strategies, who they determined, capital strategies, who they determined to be the appropriate bank, the reason why they're the appropriate bank, and we can have Julie meet with you individually, if you want.
Just answer, I'm sorry, what's the?
The answer to the question is, we need to follow certain processes.
And how long does that take?
And the process will take at least a month.
All right, well, that was the answer. All right. My second question is, that this is a line of credit for three years, that means that if you start this process, we can draw on it for three years, all right?
Right.
So once the three years is up, we have to do it all over again and pay another fee. Is that correct?
As far as if you desire, you know, hopefully in three years, you won't need the money.
Well, but irrespective of that, it has, it, once it's over... It has a shelf life. It has a shelf life. Okay, good. And the second thing is, is this doesn't guarantee a rate, even if you went through this whole process, you got RFPs, they don't tell you what the rate is, because the rate is determined by what the interest rate environment, I'm asking the question rhetorically.
Right.
By the interest rate environment, the time that you draw it. Is that correct or not correct?
And it's a very... It would be likely be variable. And the variable can be beneficial, especially when it's a, where it's not a capital item, if it's, let's say you need to do O and M with it, the variable rate, it sounds kind of more horrendous, but it's usually callable, meaning you can pay it off, there's no timeline where if you have something for capital and you're using tax exempt, that's where you get the non-callable feature.
Yeah. The reason why I'm asking you these questions is, I'm trying to figure out, I mean, I think $50,000, well, we don't have any money.
It's expensive.
Is an issue. So I'm trying to figure out whether we can get our hands around the mechanics of this, and the understanding of this, and the notion that we even want to borrow, given our already fairly substantial debt to revenue ratios that we're carrying as a municipality, and that we could still, what do we lose if we just wait until we figure things out a little bit better? That's basically the question. Because you're not going to guarantee the rate, you're going to delay for 30 days, you still have to go through the process, and we could still have time to figure out what the heck we're doing in the budget, which we haven't done. And, but I think we should, and then my other alternative is, I know I explored a little bit, I still don't understand what the Florida Lega City's issues were, because I thought that was permanent. Did you get more information on that, Arlene?
Yeah, I've got a little bit more. I went back to emails that, because Carl had actually communicated with them, and then I also listened to the meeting when he described it. And it, the issue, why he ultimately said it probably wouldn't work for us for what we were thinking we needed, is that it's basically a tax exempt, and so there's requirements, you can't actually reimburse yourself for expenses, so you basically have to meet the criteria for identifying a capital purchase, and it'll be used for that purpose. Going forward, so you can't do inter-fund loans, you can't do something to set it up, so the money is highly restricted. The other thing, I believe, is strictly borrowing for capital, so O and M type expenses, if that's where it could be a problem.
Can I ask a que, are you through?
Excuse me?
Are you, can I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm a little confused here. I thought we were doing this, Sanibel did it for an emergency, for a disaster.
Mm-hmm.
So now we're talking about, these words that are being thrown around imply for other purposes.
No, I'm still thinking about a disaster.
Well, what's OEM?
That's why we wanted to bring this forward to you.
What's OEM, original equip, I'm thinking of my Jeep, original equipment merchandise.
Well, that's the reason why it's set up as a line of credit.
What's an OEM? You said if you bought...
O and M is operation and maintenance.
All right, so that's what I'm getting at. I mean, if this is, there are at least 50 questions, but I mean, there are two basic questions here. One is, if this is an emergency, pull the money out, I got a new hurricane, that's what Sanibel has. Right. I thought that's what the suggestion had been last time. If it's, we're borrowing and setting up a borrowing for other purposes, it's a totally different question.
Keep the lights on.
Well, that's a totally different question. And I agree with what Amy's implying on that. That relates to what our financial condition is, what are we borrowing for? Do we want to borrow more money? And frankly, I'm not inclined to borrow more money myself, but even if I were, I wouldn't do it on a line of credit, I'd do it out over time. I thought this is meant to be an emergency thing. So I don't know, I'm a little confused. I'm not implying you're confusing me, but what's the goal here?
That was giving a little bit of flexibility in the purpose for it, because I thought that during the discussion, there was, you mentioned about maybe funding for some capital projects, but that's fine, you know, that's what we want this direction, and we can, you know, just say it's just for a disaster.
You were proposing it like Kevin had for an emergency.
Well, I'm looking for flexibility, period. I'm not trying to pigeonhole it one way or another.
All right, well, that's a different question to me, which is, do we borrow more?
This is, do we borrow, or do we get a line of credit in case we need it?
But there's a cost associated with getting the line of credit.
But then you ought to be, I think you ought to be going out, if it's more macro, I think we got to be figuring out what our coverage ratios are, talking to her, she probably is all over this stuff, and what's our ability to borrow, and how far out can we go, and, you know, what the, what's the, the yield curve is?
Yeah.
You know, all that stuff.
I have...
Rather than just doing what we're doing seven years.
Can we borrow from, we have some funds that are supposed to be used for certain purposes, that we have earmarked to go, are allocated further out. Can we borrow against those, but only for the same purpose for which the funds, I'm asking the question? Can we, do we have any flexibility? I mean, I really do think that we need some education from you for just what our financial state is. I don't think that we fully understand what situation we're in.
Okay.
What are our alternatives in, I'm in favor of emergency line of credits. If you have to, you have to, what are you going to do? Even though I don't think that the debt to revenue ratio is good, all right, but if you have to pay for the things we're going to pay for, we're going to pay our bills. But are, what other alternatives? At one time, on one of the earlier budget meetings, you thought we had some cash flow...
Right.
...ability, and I think you said, well, it's really close, but what does really close mean?
We had the ability, amazingly, our cash balances are staying about the same as they were last year at this time. The general fund cash is down, the road impact fee cash is up, the building fee fund cash is up, and the debt service, 2011 debt service cash is up because of the communications services tax and the electricity franchise fee. So we have about the same, we are, month to month, we are staying at the same level of total cash amongst our funds, which gives us the opportunity to borrow from those funds if the, if the general fund would, would need it from a cash flow. But what I previously mentioned to you is, inter-fund borrowing doesn't give you budgetary authority to put a budget in place for an expenditure. It would be a cash flow and issue, and it would be because of the timing of our revenues coming in, but that's generally not going to be our problem with the general fund, because we get our tax revenue so early in the fiscal year. But, but we do have some, like, in the month of September, some of our revenues don't come in until October, but, so there is that cash flow, but, but we're, from a cash flow standpoint, we're, we're doing okay.
We're managing.
We're managing.
And that is because we can borrow from these other funds, let me just...
If need to be.
But I didn't understand what you said, that you...
If you wanted to...
If you borrowed, then what can you do with that? You couldn't put it in your budget and say, I'm going to borrow.
You couldn't say, I have an expenditure, let's take money out of the building fee fund and pay that general fund expenditure.
To pay, put new carpet in this quarter, we couldn't budget for that.
Right, right. You couldn't have a budget to say that there's something out there that you, that you would like to buy.
So it wouldn't be good for emergency, then? You couldn't use it for an emergency?
Inter-fund borrowing, it won't give you the budget, you still need a budget when you have an emergency, like the debris... you have an emergency, like the debris removal and all the hurricane. So that would need to be, you know, if we didn't have the ability to have a budget in place, we would need to do an external borrowing. And once again, external borrowing does give you budgetary authority because when we borrow money, it comes in as an other financing service source. You create a budget as similar to a revenue.
So then I, I don't understand your comment that we, we do not really have a cash flow problem. I don't understand why that could be true. If you start out with zero in your unassigned balance, if you meet every.
We still have our, our emergency, we still have our reserves for disasters and operating.
So we'd have to pay the operating of $5 million, use that, what we have, $4 million, four million, we use that first and then if there's an emergency, you can hit the $1 million.
Right.
But by definition, if we had an event like last year, we went through that and more. And the and more is what she's talking about, which is an issue.
But we would first hit those, so we would have three months to go through a line of credit and see what we could do with it because we could hit that first.
Right.
We'd have to spend $6 million, we can spend $6 million, $5 million, something.
Or we have to do this and spend $50,000.
I think the cleanup would be a little slower.
What did you say?
I shouldn't say it, forget it.
If you're going to mutter, you're going to mutter louder.
I'm not going to mutter.
Yeah, you got to mutter louder.
Attention muttered.
So is your preference to, to wait on this?
I would wait, but I don't know what anybody else wants to do.
I'd like to, I'd like to just to understand more holistically, you know, what's our credit rating? What do we, what is it?
We don't have a credit.
All right, why not?
Well, because we've never done a public.
Well, yeah, but if we, yeah, but they can, they can model it and come up with something.
You can do the ratios.
You know, I mean, the way I look at it, the stuff we borrowed, it's always been hocked, you know, we're pledging this, we're pledging that. So, and I'd love to get a feel from our advisor before she goes out on the street as to like, what are, what is financially, does she think of our situation now? And what position is that going to be put? Yeah, I mean, the rate floats, but it's going to be something like LIBOR on top of the rate. And that's, that spread is going to be a reflection of what they perceive to be our credit quality.
And I agree, I don't think, I just don't think we have enough answers. I mean, we see what we see, but I think there's a lot more that we're not seeing or like we say to our kids, don't make us ask you the right questions, just tell us what we need to know.
Exactly.
Right, right? So, yeah, and I, and I don't mean that, I'm not pointing or looking at anybody. I think we need more dialogue, we need more numbers, we need, we need, we need it all. We need what we're not even asking you for. And I hope, and I hope that makes sense.
No, it makes perfect sense because I don't even know the questions, that's why I keep asking these questions because.
Absolutely.
Tell me what I don't know.
Right, we're in violent agreement, right?
Exactly.
We're in violent agreement.
And obviously, we don't know a lot, but thanks.
So from, we will need to notify the, the financial advisor then, so are we thinking about tabling this for, until we can get?
If I had to make a specific suggestion, assuming you think she's good at it.
Okay.
It, it would be to talk to the financial advisor, explain everything we talked about here today, well put here, what we don't know and what exactly is our financial position with respect, in her view, with respect to borrowing rates, long-term, short-term, emergency, non-emergency, hawk this, hawk that, whatever. It's more of a complete understanding.
Okay.
Is that fair?
Yes, no, absolutely. Fred, Mike, you're good with that? Okay, dynamite. Okay, thank you very much. Thanks so much. Arlene?
I just want to finish up. I was able to brief Amy a little bit on this when we did our tour with Matt, but we're, at our staff level, we're beginning an evaluation of our public and private stormwater systems internally with staff. And this is a team effort with Public Works, our legal department, community development, neighborhood services and communications department because communications is going to be absolutely key in this. There will be an aspect of enforcement in it, but we want to absolutely educate everybody on this as well. And these would be possibly defunct stormwater systems and systems that we know are not functioning. We need to educate those homeowners on their systems and what's happening and what's not happening, provide tips and guidance. But in the end, we need, we'll, we'll be coming back for more direction, but we do have regulations in place and there's permits in place and there's other governmental agencies permits in place. So we're going to need to start making sure that those systems are brought to their function and we're going to have, try to look at what solutions we have. This is a long, long-term goal project and we're working on a process of meeting every, every other week with updates. There is going to be a communications promotion of this and the communications will be that the same message that community development has when the person comes in the door will be the same message that neighborhood services has and our Public Works folks. So, and then we want to bring all that back, back to you in, in steps and we'll try to provide a mechanism to provide updates on that. This will affect many, many people and then, but that's why it's going to be such a long-term effort of ours.
I commend you and your staff for doing this and part of this came out of some interaction that we had with residents in District One where they were questioning the work that was done by the staff or not done in order to clear waterways and conveyances. And, and I think we all realize that none of, none of our communities really understand what kind of stormwater management they have or who's responsible for it, which is even, even worse. And this, and we took a tour yesterday, a couple of days ago. And it is quite a monumental project here, but I think it absolutely has to be done and, and thank you for initiating that and thank you for all the work that has been done and all that will, will be done in the future.
Absolutely, Fred?
Well, are you also going out to different community associations and saying, oh, the berm around your community has gone to hack in a handbasket and you guys need to fix it?
So this is, the first step is we want to determine an evaluation of the system functioning and understand what that is. And then that will probably lead to communication with those organizations, whether that be neighborhood services, community development, depending on what steps have to be taken. Also, what we're learning is some of these systems are both public and private. So solutions are going to have to be brought forward to council and we understand there's going to be probably economic concerns from some of those residents who are in defunct neighborhood associations that aren't currently collecting dues. So we just wanted to give you a very brief update right now. This is a definite long-term multifaceted project that we're going to have to set the low-hanging fruit midterm, midterm progress and then long-term progress. And many of that long-term progress might lead into discussions as we move forward with the stormwater utility program and what evaluations happen with that as well. But, but we will be doing outreach, we'll be creating a information system for this with our communications department. And as we get those processes going, we'll bring back updates to council so that you all are aware before we go out to the public with the information, so that you're, you have the information first.
Okay, great. Great. Okay, thank you so much. Anything else, Arlene? Okay, once again, congratulations. Mayor and council member reports, Amy.
All right, really quick, first of all, I want to thank Mike Gibson who brought his lunch to our executive meeting so that we could have a quorum. And I very much appreciate that because we would have been up a creek if we didn't have that. And it was a very good responsiveness when he had already said he wasn't, he had already said he wasn't going to be able to.
Was it Grandpa's Pizza?
Pardon me, we did.
Was it Grandpa's Pizza?
That's why it was, you probably didn't know that, that's why you were on the phone for so long.
No, no, I just wanted to, I was educated.
But I appreciate the effort that was made because that could have been bad. And second, this is kind of facetiously, but I want to give a shout out to Brett Batten who wrote up the Benita Springs High School. And I don't know if you read his article, but it was, I thought it was hilarious.
No, I didn't see it.
And it made fun of something that we, he wasn't making fun of the high school, but it was just a funny way of looking at going to high school, remembering what it was like when we were older. But the high school, we, many of us went to that ribbon cutting or that opening and it was, we're so excited about it and thank you for all the effort that was made from our council to the school board, to Lee County and everybody that participated in bringing it here. And I look forward to the tour, which we're supposed to have when, when the children are, when the students are in there. But it's, it's really a great asset and we're, you know, we should all be thrilled of it. And I just want to make one comment because I got an email from Barbara Craig who sits on our zoning board, but she's also a member of the Estero Bay Agency on Bay Management. And evidently, and maybe Arlene knows more about this because she, it was also brought up to me by Martha Simons, that they are asking for us to, of course, to have some money because there's a five-year study where they review the bay and everything. And I guess in the past, we have done this as a council and I think it's, well, I think it's 6,000 or something like that. I don't know if we want to do it, but it's, we're going to talk about it at, I'm going to give you a heads up that it sounds like it's something we've done in the past. We probably, it's to review what's happening there and in light of all the effort we're making for the water, it might be something we would want to help the Regional Planning Agency to do that, so. And I don't know if you have any, you're going to follow up on that?
Yeah, I'll follow up.
But I wanted to give, I didn't want to bring it up.
No?
You know, and I think that's, that's about it. You know, she also relayed issue about the, the things we talked about earlier and, and the health risks of it. And she recommended contacting Dr. Paul Cox, who is an expert on the health risks of all these things we're talking about if we're interested.
Okay.
But that's it, thank you.
Great, thanks, Amy. Greg?
I'm just going to do my public safety announcement for Peter and Peter, for you guys in Benita Bay, I know they have a large bike riding contingency. Just have them be careful on Old 41, if they're riding down Old 41 by the railroad tracks. Chief Daigle was hurt very badly on those railroad tracks. He flipped his touring bike that he did.
Down below?
Yes, right by Mediterra. And I've ran numerous calls there in my career, but Chief Daigle ended up hurting himself real bad, broke his neck, cracked his vertebrae, ligaments in his neck, what, six or eight stitches, concussion. So I know you guys have a large contingency of bike riders, so just please pass it on. Same thing with you, Amy, in the.
Yes, I'll pass it on to.
Pass on to Joe.
Yeah. Yeah, right, our best, please. And if we could, Arlene, could we send the chief something?
Yeah, we got a card going right now.
We have a card going.
So yeah, I just want to do public safety, just please be careful on those tracks, especially in like in the mornings and when it's a little bit damp, it seems to be a little bit slicker. I know I've spoke to Matt about it already, about the CIP, it's already on there to be taken care of, but still like.
And you always want to cross them perpendicular. A lot of people think at an angle, but that's when you crash, you want to go straight across.
Exactly, so. So anyway, that's it.
No, thanks, Greg. Peter?
Just if there ever were an efficient five-hour meeting, this was it.
Yeah, definitely. Mike? Fred?
Yeah, one thing I just want to caution everybody. It will not surprise me if a number of you are not approach to sponsor a presentation either in favor of or against, more likely in favor of, the upcoming sales tax issue. And we should not, individually, we can support or oppose, but that should not go on in this chambers on taxpayers' money. And if we do do it, we got to give the other side equal opportunity.
We have no time anyway.
Great. No, and I just want to, I just want to mention here, go ahead, yeah, no, but I'll get in a minute. Just want to mention last night, Jesse Purdon and a lot of members of the outreach committee, under Sheriff Carmine Marcino and literally Councilman DeWitt was there, I was there, Councilman Gibson was there. And just an amazing event last night for the unfortunate tragic event of Officer Jobbers Miller's family. It was a benefit. I haven't heard how much was raised, but I can tell you there was well over 100 people there. There was silent auctions, there were items that were donated, there was food for sale, drinks for sale, that type of thing. And, you know, I mean, I can go up and down the line, but State Senator Kathleen Pasadena was there, members of Congressman Rooney's office were there, Representative Ray Rodriguez, Representative Byron Donalds, Bob Rommel from Naples. It was just an amazing, amazing, Representative Fitzhagen, it just went on and on and on and on. And really, all walks of Benita Springs and Collier and Lee County came together for that event. So very, very unfortunate event, but, but very, in, you know, very successful event that was pulled together last night by our, I guess, our internal team, if you will, and hats off to them. Yes, Amy?
I just want to follow up on that because for those of us who, I couldn't come last night, there is a GoFundMe account for that and you can get it right off the internet and I directly contributed that way. So those of us who couldn't participate and want to do it that way, that works too.
Absolutely, thank you so much. And Arlene, once again, congratulations and everybody, thanks for, yep. Thanks, thanks for everything we're doing and you know, it, you know, I can say this and I don't, you know, you can only make a comparison and think you're looking back with different, but I'll just, I'll just say, for a council that disagrees and argues as much as we do, and I, I'm not saying this, I love each and every one of you and honestly, the second that we leave this dais, it's gone, right? I mean, let's face it, we got a lot of issues up here that we're talking about and I can